Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to our city council meeting. We had a beautiful day today, November 10th, 2014. And we appreciate everyone being with us. And as we go through our agenda, if you want to speak on any particular item on the agenda, you can certainly do that. Just let us know by raising your hand, and then at the right time, we'll come over here and speak. Anything that you'd like to talk about on the agenda, you can do. At this time, we'll have a prayer and a pledge of allegiance to our flag.
For those of you who choose to bow our heads in prayer. Our heavenly Father, once again, you've allowed us to enter these chambers to make decisions in the best interest of our city and our community. We thank you, oh dear God, for allowing us to safely return to these chambers. We thank you for our city staff and our volunteers who give up their time and their talent to make this city the best place in the world to live, grow, and raise their families and prosper. God, we know that we face daily challenges in our work, but you said to us that you will meet all of our needs according to the riches of your glory. We ask, dear Father, that you grant us peace and prosperity to our city, for you said that as our city prospers, we all will prosper. We pray for the men and women who have served in the armed forces and continue to serve our country with dignity and with pride, and they made sacrifices for us to endure the freedom that sometimes, Lord, we take for granted. Take care of their families and protect them from harm and danger. And Father, as we begin this meeting tonight, we pray for order, we pray for wise leadership, and peaceful relations, where we always act in accordance to your will and work together in unity. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Counsel, do we have any additions or deletions to the agenda this evening? If not, we'll move on to the first item, the minutes. First minutes, consideration of the minutes of the work session and regular meeting of October 27th, 2014, and the special call meeting and executive session of October 29th, 2014. Do we have a motion and a second for approval?
I so move.
Second. Okay. Any discussion?
I do have one clarification, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
When we had the contractual matter about the sale of property at 139 Newbury Street, we said if it wasn't for sale now, does, and maybe Mr. Ledoux can answer it better, do we need to take any action officially to say it's not for sale because of the price, or are we just going to set it there? We really didn't say if somebody came in and offered us full price if we'd sell it or half price or something. How do we handle this for the future if somebody comes in with an offer? We had an offer, but we said it was too low. So I guess we'll see if Mr. Ledoux can comment, or what do we do in the future if somebody wants to buy it?
The response we had at the meeting was to not put the property up for sale. In other words, don't put up a sign, don't actively pursue at this point in time and see if the economy gets better, and then at that point in time, we'd go ahead and put up for sale. So currently, we're not actively, if somebody comes to us with another offer at some point in time, we'd certainly bring that to council's attention, but we're not actively pursuing any offers at this time.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
In addition to that, if we're going to put, it's important for the entire community to know that we have the property up for sale and not people that someone knows that knows somebody. So we need to make sure that it is an announcement that the community knows about.
Back in August, we said for sale, and then we said no, and no. And I just, you know, if an offer comes, I think to the city manager, I think it ought to be brought to us, and then we have the ability to accept it or not accept it, just like you're saying.
So it's for sale, but just we're not going to state a price?
At this time, we're not actually offering it for sale.
Yeah, that's what we said. I'm just being sure that we all are on the same page with that.
But you're also saying if somebody comes along and makes an offer, we consider it.
There's no official announcement to the general public saying that we have the property for sale, or am I?
That's correct.
Okay.
That's something that I think others have talked about, and I have talked about it several times. We're not, we haven't even publicized
Right.
the fact that the property's for sale. And it seems like when we, when we do get serious about it, that's the first thing we ought to do. We ought to go out and publicize the fact that it's for sale and put up some signs. Sitting there now, I don't know why we don't do that now, or maybe it's not the best time of the year to do that, but anyway, I think when we get to that point, we need to advertise it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Reggie. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Show hands, please. Pass is unanimous. And the business first item is approval of appointments and discussion of appointees to various city boards, commissions, and committees. Mr. Ledoux, please.
Yes, sir. We have three appointments before you tonight. One is the reappointment of Bob Vesley to the planning commission. Another one is for the reappointment of Judy Turner to the board of zoning appeals and the reappointment of Kent Covage to the planning commission. So those are the three appointments you have before you tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thanks, sir. Do we have a motion and a second for approval?
I move approval, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Second, any discussion? If not, show hands, please. All in favor. Pass is unanimous. Item two is the second reading.
Mayor.
Excuse me.
Pointless. Pointless for next meeting.
How come I do that every time?
Every time.
Sorry.
I have one. I'd like to appoint Juanita Palmer to the accommodations tax committee. You have the information before you.
Mayor, I want to reappoint Don Broderick to the design review board and also Mr. Jack Hunter to the planning commission.
Okay, sir.
For next, actually, next meeting.
And, Mr. Mayor, I have three appointments that will expire next month. The individuals, Brian Parks, who's on the Parks and Recreation Commission, Belize Cummings, who's on the Design and Review Commission, and Larry Oboltry, who's on the Board of Zoning and Appeals, have all agreed to continue their service, that we would select them.
Okay, very good. Item two is the second reading, public hearing with ordinance to advance funding approval for the Lloyd Town Water Tank Painting Project. Mr. Ledoux, please.
Yes, sir. This is, I'll read this by its title only, and it's an ordinance authorizing borrowing from the City of Aiken General Fund Reserve Account as outlined in this ordinance for the purpose of funding the Lloyd Town Water Tank Painting Project. As it turns out, probably by the time we finish painting this project, we'll have enough money anyways, but we feel, I feel better if we go ahead and process it as if we may not have the money. So that's why you had that before you tonight. So tonight, it's the second reading of an ordinance to approve the bid and the interfund loan for the funding in the amount of $145,000 for the Lloyd Town Water Tank Painting Project.
Okay, thank you, sir. Do we have a motion and a second for approval?
I move, Mr. Mayor, that we approve this funding for the Lloyd Town Water Tank Painting Project for $145,000.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? If not, show hands, please. All in favor. Pass is unanimous. And the new business, first item, approval of an agreement with Woolpert, Inc. to complete a total maximum daily load monitoring plan.
EPA and DEHAC have a requirement now that all communities of our size do testing of some of the outflow areas for stormwater, also providing educational materials, and a few other items that are required under the MS4 program. One of those things is to test the total maximum daily load, or to actually do measurements, then you bring it back to lab and test it of various outfall areas. We have gotten a proposal here from Woolpert Incorporated to complete the DEHAC requirement at a cost of $32,975 for your approval tonight.
Okay, thank you, sir. Do we have a motion and a second for approval?
Some move, Mr. Mayor?
I second.
Okay, discussion?
Yes, I assume that Woolpert will be working with Dr. Eitzen at Clemson. As you know, when we awarded that research grant about two years ago now, part of that grant was to help identify some of this, the outlets and flow rates for that. So I would assume that they will work with, or get his data and review that data also.
They'll be working together. Again, they're fairly separate types of programs that they'll be working on. But yes, we will have to coordinate. Dr. Eitzen's working on one particular basin and one particular area, and this will be throughout this community.
Yeah, he's working on two basins, but we want to be sure, whatever the, the downtown basin is mainly what we're working on.
Correct.
To be sure we don't come up with a separate entity, so to speak.
I'm looking for George out there.
We will coordinate it.
Now.
Thank you.
You heard it from the man.
Right. Show hands, please, all in favor. Unanimous. Item two, the funding recommendations from the accommodations tax committee.
Yes, we have received some additional funds from the state. There is a settlement on the state, I hate to blame it on them, but there was some confusion on their part as to the amount of funds that we should be receiving for accommodation funding. And again, this is, the accommodation funding is used by the various events and programs in our community for areas 50 miles or greater from the City of Aiken or in adjoining states. So you can't advertise or do something locally, it's money used outside the area. We do have some additional funding, and the tax accommodation committee met, and they are making these recommendations to you. They'll be meeting again later this month to take a look at some other additional recommendations, but these are the recommendations that the tax committee had from their October 23rd meeting.
Okay, thank, thank you, sir.
So Roger, you're saying this is not a complete list? This is just what they had up until 23rd?
Yes, they're going to go ahead and, Kim, I believe you said at the end of this month, they're going to be meeting again?
It'll be this week.
This week.
Well, Peggy Penland, who's chair of that committee, is in the audience.
We have some questions of these individual items.
I just want to point out, I was asked a question about how we verify this money and so forth, and people should understand that after the event occurs, there's a report required from the event people back, does it go to Park and Recs or does it go to the accommodations tax committee? Okay, so it's a report that goes back?
They do surveys at the various sites.
Yes.
Asking people out of town, if so, you know, various questions, and then that report comes back, so that, let's just say it was the Bluegrass Festival or something, then next time they're asking for more money, they have these survey results showing approximately what is expected.
Well, isn't it true if they only spent $31,000, they would have to give the $4,000 back?
Again, it's based on receipts from the advertisements.
Yes.
Right.
Yeah, okay.
And again, based on the email for Peggy, I'm sorry, the memo that we have, people have until November 12th, that's when you meet, is that correct?
Peggy, would you go over? I have a question after, let's see, point.
Yeah, I think we need to clarify, my name is Peggy Penland. I'd like to clarify the funding. There were $115,000 and $115,054.96 was requested from the various organizations. Not 100% of it was awarded.
That's correct.
We awarded $11,959.6. There was advertising, there was plenty of opportunity for the people who put on these events and new organizations. They were all notified, it was in the paper, and so they were able to come back and request, for instance, if they did not, they were not fully funded the first time around, they could come back and ask for the balance of that, and they were also invited to ask for some new funding. But all that has to be approved, and I'd like to compliment Elizabeth Harms for the great job she does. All of those proposals are reviewed, and it has to go for 50 miles away, you know, advertising, and it's all to promote tourism. So that is all carefully scrutinized ahead of time, and it's approved, you know, it has to be qualified funding. So we approved the, almost $112,000. There are additional funds available that have not been awarded or voted upon by our group, so that's why we're having a meeting.
So there's $183,000, there's $183,000 that you all are going to be meeting, but if somebody sends a request in now, and the reason that I asked the question is because I heard from someone today that said that they were not aware of it, but I talked with Kim, and Kim told me the process in terms of your, going back to previous submitters, those kinds of things, to make sure the word got out to individuals.
And we had new, we had new ones that came.
Okay.
If they didn't know, it wasn't because it wasn't well publicized.
Okay.
That's all I can say.
My question, though, is individuals can submit a request now and be considered by November 12th? No?
No, right? Kim, can maybe help us out here?
We're meeting on Wednesday to talk about the excess funds that we have available, but there'll be another special meeting called to award those funds.
Okay.
These funds are the ones we met on, back a month ago.
October or whatever.
Correct. That's what we're recommending, these funds, that you can put the funds in, and then we go back and meet again to talk about the different ones.
Okay.
You'll have another report similar to this coming to you probably in December meeting.
Okay.
I have a question. As I look over this list, I see that the Aiken Bluegrass Festival is getting more than anyone else, and it seems like to me it's a very high number.
It is a high number.
And I don't understand why it would be so high when we could use money for something else. I'd like to see some of the money, and maybe it's too late now, but you know, the chamber put out a very good book of information, list of information about what we need in our city.
Right.
And things that we can do. And I would see some of this money could go to advertising our city. Now, I recognize that a city is recognized by these, some of these things that are here because they bring people in, but I'm talking about the city as a whole, as a place to live, raise families, and that kind of thing. And if we don't do some of that, this is all great, and it may bring in a few people that'll, that'll come in and live, maybe, but why is, why is that so high? I just don't understand.
The reason it's so high is that I was not at that festival, but the, this particular event has grown by leaps and bounds. They used to be at the polo field, we're on Newbury Street, and they are now out at the fairgrounds, and it is big now.
How many heads on beds?
Elizabeth, I'm sure I have it in this file. Elizabeth, try to keep me distracted with this.
I'm not being-
Do we have surveys on that, Elizabeth?
I'm not trying to be-
It was impressive.
I'm not trying to be critical of what you're doing.
I know.
It's a hard thing, and I understand it, and you've been doing a super job for years.
I was surprised, too, Mr. Mayor, about that, but when I heard about the numbers of people, and you know, we do scrutinize this because we do know that a lot of people camp at this event, but they also stayed in hotels.
Do you-
The musicians stay in hotels, and next year, they're having the number one ranked bluegrass band in the United States is coming to Aiken. So-
Well, that's, that's-
And you know, as much as I really agree with you about moving to Aiken, we have to follow the rules, and the rules are tourism. You know, this is about putting heads on beds. Now, as far as the funding, the balance of the funding, we all requested that we have this additional meeting ASAP, because I am totally in agreement with you. There are other ways that we can promote our city besides having these events, and that's what we're going to be talking about this week.
Yeah. Well, well, this, you know, you can look at this, if it brings families in to look at Aiken, and then they, they enjoy the festival, and, I mean, that's tourism, the first time they come in, they're touring.
Right.
Right?
And it takes a few times to be a tourist before they relocate.
And if they decide to stay, that's all the, all the better. But that, that just seems so out of balance to me that I-
Well, this is your decision. You may, you know, this is not, this is up to y'all.
What did we grant them last time around?
Last time around, let's see, we had $10,000, is that right, Elizabeth?
So we've more than doubled them.
From $10,000 to $35,000.
Wow.
I'm not, I'm not going to support that, I'll tell you right now, when it gets time to vote, because I just think that's way out of-
We don't have any numbers to tell us how they came up, I mean, can we get the numbers?
Well, if we have, if we can see a big shoot, a big improvement in the heads on beds, or, then that would be great.
I don't have their numbers from last year, but I do have their numbers from this year, or, excuse me, I don't have their numbers from two years ago, but I do have them from this year. They had about 7,500 people in attendance. 3,500 of those people do, through their surveys, were tourists, were qualified as tourists, and I believe it was 50% of those stayed in hotels. Most of our hotel rooms were full during that event.
Are they usually full during that event? Maybe not. Maybe not.
That's one of the challenges that we have right now is, and as a hotelier, I can understand the issue, that the people who work at your hotel don't exactly know what every guest is doing in town. Sometimes it's hard to ascertain exactly why they're here, but they have done a good job with their surveys, and we were all surprised at how much this event has grown. Would you like to make any recommendations?
Mentioned again, on November 12th, they're going to be meeting, and there's an additional $183,000 that they're going to be discussing, how should that money be spent and what for? So some of the questions that, Mr. Mayor, that you've been asking about could be resolved at that meeting. The tricky part is the fact that this money, according to the regulations, has to be used to bring more tourism to the city, not to bring more people to Aiken to live or anything else. But again, we spend a lot of money with numerous magazines promoting Aiken with this money, and we normally will leverage some of this money with additional state money we get, and that's within the tourism budget. And I know we spend some years, hundreds of thousands of dollars in those other magazines. And Elizabeth, you could probably tell us a little bit about some of those magazines and where, and how that money is spent.
Well, I would just like to see, and maybe it is, and let me know if it is, it targeted toward what I was talking about, you know, bringing families in, coming in for the history, not just, you know, the carnival or whatever it is, but, but talking about Aiken. And, you know, Woodside and some of the other gated communities, they do a good job of advertising. I mean, they go after, they go after folks to come, come in, come into Aiken. And not just them, but, you know, a lot of those type of groups, and I don't see Aiken doing that. Tell me if we're doing that.
We absolutely are.
You are? Okay.
I see the publications.
Yeah, it's exciting. We actually are in Carolina Living, which is strictly a relocation magazine. We just resigned a contract with them recently, a contract and agreement with them. We also are in Azalea Magazine, we're in several Greenville publications, we had a Christmas ad in Southern Living. So we are in a lot of magazines, but we've also tried to move away from as much magazine and do a lot of online advertising, digital advertising, which is sort of where the trend is going.
Right.
I also think it's important to note that one of the changes we made this year to our ATAX program is each of these projects is required to have a direct link on their website to our website, in addition to including our tourism logo on all of their advertising materials. So I think that's a good, a good step in making sure we all are branded together.
Okay, it would be good to, thank you for that, and I apologize for anything I said wrong, and-
Elizabeth-
Still think that's a lot of money, $35,000.
Maybe for the next meeting, you could have some of the examples of these magazines that we could include within the packet to show some of what, because again, they're not advertising any one event in these magazines or these other publications, it's Aiken in general.
Yes, sir, certainly.
We gave them $10,000 last year. We had a turnout of over 7,500, saying the hotels were filled to capacity. We're giving them $35,000 is what the request is this time. What we plan to do, and what's different, what will they gain differently with hotels filled that we weren't able, we are not able to do for $10,000?
Good question.
Well, there again, we don't know that every hotel in Aiken was filled because of the Bluegrass Festival. We know that the event has grown tremendously. So we try to reward people who have done what we asked them to do, and do their surveys, and when their attendance, what, triples? It's more than triple, right? I mean, when they have that kind of attendance-
Well, $20,000, that would double the amount rather than tripling the amount of 35, or more than triple, $35,000.
You would like to make a change? It is completely up to you.
Do you have a, I mean, is there, are there any ratios? In other words, does the number of tourists equate to these dollars in any, in any relationship? Is there any?
When we consider these requests, we take the funding that is requested, and we divide by the number of people, number of tourists, and see how much it's costing us per hotel, how much is it costing us to get one hotel room? Yeah, we do that.
Okay, so you do have a ratio.
And we have a new program, which I think we discussed the last time, the new criteria for grading these applications.
So it might be safe to say that, that Aiken Bluegrass Festival brought in twice the number of tourists that Aiken Polo Club did, because it's virtually, essentially twice the funding? If the ratio is, holds true, that would be, I could make that assumption?
Well, it's kind of hard. I mean, listen, we all have to-
Doesn't work that way. Doesn't work that way.
We all have to understand, they're, the accommodations tax committee is following the book before they bring these recommendations to us.
Of course.
The Polo Club could have 15 different events, as I understand it, during the year, and, and the Bluegrass Festival has one. I mean, they're bringing thousands of people into our community. That's what this whole thing is all about, bringing people into our community. We want, we want to do that, plus, we want them to stay in our hotels. I mean, they're doing both of those. I, I commend you for, for doing it. It's a, it's a tough decision, but we do verify that the money is spent the way the state says it should be spent. I don't know what more we can, I mean, we might not like $35,000, but attendance has tripled, it seems, as- thousand, but, um, attendance has tripled, it seems, as though it's warranted.
From ten to thirty-five thousand is a big increase-
It is.
-in one year.
But so was their attendance. Their attendance tripled.
Their attendance is increasing.
And you don't have the attendance number-
We don't know that.
Elizabeth and Peggy, and you don't have the attendance number for, for the previous year.
No, she doesn't have the attendance.
Not, not here with us tonight. We have those records in my office.
Are there double, tripled, quadrupled? Are you aware at all?
Here it is, right here.
But you said they started out performing on polo fields, and then-
And they outgrew it.
And now they are at the fairgrounds.
Right. And the fact that they've gotten the kind of talent that they have recruited and secured is pretty amazing. Um, okay, this is all, these are all their numbers.
Would you dare to guess what it would be next year?
I'm sorry?
Would you dare to guess what it would be next year?
I think the, the folks in place that are working on that project, um, work hard for the project.
And they all work, and no, you know, they don't get paid for that, for this. It did not triple, okay? It grew twenty-five percent. It grew twenty-five percent. Seventy-five percent, is that right? It grew, seventy-five percent of the, of the people are from out of town.
Seventy-five percent are from out of town. But you have attendance numbers?
We can't say that, like, for Aiken Polo Club. We can't.
I understand. But do you do have attendance numbers there?
I do not have the attendance numbers on this application card.
Not from last, the year before. They do a good job with their surveying, because they sell most of their tickets online, they're able to do a lot of their surveying online.
So seventy-five hundred attendees, and seventy-five percent from out of town for this year.
See, the numbers just don't add up to, you know, when you look to the dollars, and what are the other folks gonna do when they see this kind of thing? What are they gonna be tempted to do?
I don't know.
Well, I know it's hard, and I appreciate what, what everybody's doing, but I just think that's well out of line.
But you have hotel receipts to support this, as far as the numbers of people that stayed.
They have done surveys. They have done surveys, and because they sell so many tickets online, they know where the people come from. Now, we do scrutinize them because we know that a bunch of people who come camp out. And they told us that there were four hundred and fifty tents, and, I mean, they, because they sell the spaces. Now, we know the hotels were full. We don't exactly know what, what number exactly were here for the Bluegrass Festival. But we do know that the musicians, and there were a lot of them, stayed in the hotels, and we do know they were guests. So I completely understand your concern.
Okay. Well, thank you, both. And everyone else that's working on this.
I didn't know Kim had any additional information to offer.
Well, USC Cultural Center went from zero to eighteen thousand.
First time.
We usually don't have this much money.
I have a hard time hearing you.
Thirty-five thousand dollars, if that's not what you feel is appropriate, but we did have an overage this time. We still have an overage.
So we've been generous because we have an overage? Would that be-
Unexpected.
We had more money than we expected.
Right.
But then you have other people that may be coming in, making requests-
For next time.
-as well.
For next time. But it'll be in a whole different, that, the additional money.
Kim, what happens if we don't spend what we're allocated?
It goes back, got two years to spend it. Then it goes back to the state?
Yes. Okay.
If you don't spend it, you lose it.
This is less than half of the total. There's another hundred eighty-seven thousand. So this is-
Thank you.
I, I think we'll get the request. There's some folks out there.
Well, Kim, excuse me, while you're up here.
Yes, sir.
Are there any other, um, functions that some of this money could be used for, that, that you may know about, the team may know about, but they don't, they're not asking for the money? And maybe because they don't, they don't think they'll get any. Are we leaving somebody out that, that could be using this money?
We could be, but we advertised, as we have in the past, in every way that we thought we should advertise. But to leave somebody out, I mean, I honestly can't say that we didn't, but we sure didn't need to if we did.
I see the Cultural Center didn't ask for any funding for Juneteenth Festival or anything this year.
I think they've gotten funding the past few years, but didn't spend all their funding.
I think they did.
Any other-
They've had some change in their plan.
What, what did you say? Peggy, I'm sorry.
The event, this past year, they had a two-day-
Why?
The Jazz Festival was not successful. Joanne was out on the heat, and she said they decided not to do that.
This coming year?
Upcoming year, not this year.
They have, they re-
I see Joanne said that they would not be doing the Jazz Festival this year, this upcoming year or the year coming.
I had a different conversation today with Reverend Slaughter, so.
That's what Jo, that is what Joanne said at our meeting.
I was concerned about dates. People don't want vacation, school is out, but there's historic reasons why it's not.
Is there not an, this is, we can sell this later, but there, I think there's something else that's planned.
Okay. Any other questions? Guess not. All right, do, do we have a motion for approval? One second.
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
I second.
Okay.
We're approving the, as is?
Well, if we don't spend it, we gonna lose it.
Well, how long would it-
You gonna modify to thirty-five thousand, you mean?
Yes. I, I can't believe it, all the organizations out there, and with, and what we do in this town, that we can't get people that-
This is not the exhaustive list. I mean, there's, there's a lot more that will be on the next list.
Coming, right.
But I see everybody got what they requested, well, except for the, uh, Aiken Partnership of USC.
I think we used to give more than this to-
They asked for twenty-one. We need to give them twenty-one.
I may be wrong, but I think we used to give more than thirty-five thousand to the Battle of Aiken. It's all about how many people they bring in.
I think it's-
And, and it's a proportionate thing. It might not be directly proportional, but it's still a proportionate thing.
But if we got all this additional money, it, I mean, look like we can give the, uh, the people that asked for twenty-one, give them twenty-one instead of the eighteen.
Maybe, I mean, they've got the data that justified, I'm, I'm willing to go with what the committees, committee did their homework and had the numbers. I'm willing to go with what the committee recommended.
Peggy had another statement.
Peggy, with you, please.
The reason, this was the first time the Etheridge Center has ever requested funding, and it's not the Etheridge Center, it's the Aiken Partnership, but it's for the Etheridge Center. Uh, the reason they did not get a hundred percent of the funding is because we do scrutinize these applications, and their application was not, it did not have the variety, the mix of advertising that the other people did. It was all newspaper advertising. So-
Local newspaper?
No, no, no. It has to be for fifty miles outside of Aiken. But, um, they probably found out about this and came up with an application. They're not experienced at this, okay? So the other folks have, you know, done this year after year, and it was strongly felt by the committee members that they should not receive a hundred percent because of the advertising that they chose to use.
And I had to recuse myself because I sit on that partnership board, so. I totally
understand the situation. I'm sure they're happy, and we're gonna make sure that they modify the way they do that the next time. You know, we're gonna help them. You know, we do like to reward people who listen and do the surveys and go out and hire these ad agencies, and, you know, we've seen some tremendous success on the part of Aiken Polo Club and the trials and some of these events, the steeplechase. The people who really have put effort into it, it's come back. It's come back to the community. So we do try to reward them for that.
I, I'm trying to become convinced here-
Same with the Bluegrass.
Okay. That someone took ten thousand dollars, was successful with that money to attract seventy-five hundred people.
Right.
And the hotels were full. And we're saying, let's reward you by tripling your amount, and maybe you can do more? Is that what we're saying? I don't, I don't-
It wasn't our idea. They applied for the funding. They, they picked the number. We didn't. It's not like we just take a big pot of money and slice it up into pie, pieces of pie. That's not how it works. They come to us and say, they request thirty-five thousand, and here's why.
The question wasn't asked, what are you doing differently with the thirty-five thousand versus what you did for, with ten thousand?
Now they're gonna spend it, aren't they?
Oh, yeah, they have to tell us exactly where they're spending it.
Tell you where it's going.
And they have to show that they're putting their own money over and above what they're getting.
And you all were convinced that the way they're spending the thirty-five thousand dollars, you're comfortable with whatever they're doing, whatever they're doing.
Leslie, I'm gonna say this.
Okay.
My committee members, our committee-
Mm-hmm.
-was impressed by the numbers that they were able to bring in, and the fact that they were able to recruit this number one, um, group to come next year. So they have grown exponentially.
Okay.
But the money- Remember, tourists aren't just heads on beds. That's part of it. That's one of the things we count. But tourists are more than just heads on beds. They do business in our shops, they dine in our restaurants, they're, they're more than just people staying in the hotels.
Well, we understand that, yeah. But those tourism, those heads on beds, they stay a little extra while. And, uh, so I'm still, can you give me, can you give me an idea what it's gonna be next year?
But, Mr. Mayor, we're not gonna have this kind of money next year. This is a one-shot deal. That's what everybody needs to understand. This is a one-shot deal. And, you know, if you're concerned about them, for instance, I mean, this is off the top of my head. My understanding is, one year we gave the Battle of Aiken twenty-five thousand, and the next year they got five thousand. So just because they get X amount, that doesn't mean they're gonna get more the next year. It depends on the situation.
Mr. Mayor, I think, you know-
Call my question.
The money is basically, you know, designated, they allocated it. If you reduce the Bluegrass Festival, do you have a recommendation to add or subtract from any other agent? I mean, we, we set up the, uh, the committee to get all the information, and in their best judgment to give us a list.
I, I understand that, but-
Really, you know, you don't have any information? She has information that the hotels were full.
Yeah.
You know, you can't, it's not like we can tack the money onto our budget and use it to solve other problems.
I recognize that, yeah. You're, you're right.
Mr. Mayor, I am going to be very vigilant about the, what you talked about, because I think personally, and I may be talking out of school here, but I think that we, I'm not sure what is legal here, as far as what, because there are very strict rules, but what I wanna see personally, what I think we need is to promote Aiken as a whole, and get people to Aiken.
Absolutely.
It doesn't necessarily have to be for a Bluegrass Festival, or a polo game, or a steeplechase. It's all the time. What we want is to repeat, you know, eco-tourist, I mean, there, there's all kinds of good tourism out there. And, and how you affect that is where you advertise, where you put your dollars. And there's some really, really worthwhile places that we can put some of this money if it is within the guidelines. And that's what we're gonna meet about.
Okay, I understand. We all have our own opinions. But this is, this is too high.
It's just fine.
Okay, we've got a motion in a second for approval. Show of hands, please.
I'm gonna support.
Okay.
Oppose?
Who was opposed?
I oppose.
Just you?
For the reason that I, I said.
I thought Steve, Steve was opposed?
No, he was opposed.
I voted for him.
It passed.
So you're seeing the peanuts?
Passed.
Okay.
Well, I didn't know we called oppose. We didn't do it the last time.
Okay, let's see. Uh, item three, approval of a memorandum of understanding between the City of Aiken and the Aiken Performing Arts Group. Mr. Will Duke, please.
Yes, we have had a wonderful relationship with the Aiken Performing Arts Group for well over a decade. When the theater was opened up in the early two thousands, we had asked if somebody would come forward to help put together a series of programs that, uh, we could present to the public in Aiken. And Tom Hofstadter faithfully worked very hard with this group. He has turned it over, uh, the last couple of years. And this is a memorandum of, of agreement that we've had with them for a while. I'm bringing it to you for a couple of different reasons. There's a, a few minor changes in it, but it was mainly, a couple of meetings ago, we discussed some memorands of understandings and agreements that council had not seen. And so I wanted you to see these, and we're gonna be bringing other ones to you, just nothing else for information, but each one will have a few changes. So tonight, we are asking that council would approve this memorandum of understanding between the City of Aiken and the Aiken Performing Arts Group for a five-year period of time.
Okay, so thank you. Do we have a motion in a second for approval?
I submerge.
Second.
Okay. A discussion?
Yeah, I, I have a question. Overall, Roger, the bottom line, is this a net cost or a net revenue?
They, they, every time they have a performance at that location, they actually do pay the city to rent the facility. We provide some in-kind labor and help to maintain that facility, and, uh, helping to bring the show in and do some other things. But it's, it's probably, if you want to balance it out, it's a wash between the two.
But we get, we get the seat fee for all performances?
Yes. There, there is a dollar charge per seat at any time that somebody goes to that theater, whether it's with APAG, or the Playhouse, or anybody else.
That's what you define as the seat fee?
That's the seat fee, plus they're paying to rent the theater-
Okay.
-for that performance.
On page ninety-one, we need to remove item eight, our channel four. Maybe we need to put in there, we're streaming them, but we don't know if we're gonna stream it forever or not.
Which item is that again? Eight?
Item eight, and we have the social media, but the channel four, we said we were gonna discontinue.
Yeah. Yes, we could remove that since we're gonna be removing channel four.
Yep. So that, and, you know, social media, websites, all of that, we're doing, and it's the way to go in the future.
Okay.
We do have a representative here with us tonight. Don't know whether he wanted to say anything, or...
Thank you. My name is Steve Salzman. I'm the, one of the vice presidents for Aiken Performing Arts Group. And all, all I really wanted to express to the city council was our appreciation for the support that we've had in the past and the success that we've had in the past. It's been a, a very beneficial relationship, I think, and I, I think it's something that's been very beneficial to, to the citizens and, and the city itself. Uh, we just had a performance Thursday and Friday night. We had, we had, basically, sold out performances for two nights. We had twenty vacant seats on Thursday night and three vacant seats on Friday night. So, uh, it was very well received and, uh, a very appreciative audience. And so we, we try to maintain high quality. We try to bring in world-class professional performers to the city, and, uh, try to attract people coming in so that, so that they can come to Aiken rather than going to Columbia, or Atlanta, or Augusta. So that's one of the objectives we try to do. I think one of the things that gets overlooked is that we also do an outreach program to the schools. Uh, we take the performers out, uh, to the schools and have them do master classes, or demonstrations, or mini performances. Uh, this group that came, went to Wagner, to the LC, uh, I didn't go to the school, so I forget, but it was the middle school in, in Wagner that they went to.
Corvett.
Yeah, Corvett. Thank you, thank you. Uh, the kids loved it. I mean, they were just fantastically appreciative about it. So, that's one of the things that attracted me to the organization. So that's one of the things that attracted me to the organization was the outreach. Of course, we, we do the instruments in the attic program. People will donate their instruments and we will evaluate them and refurbish them and give them to the schools. So, so far, we've given over 200 instruments to the school district, which includes 14 pianos. Of course, they don't give enough funding, so that, that's a way we can help also. So again, I wanna express our appreciation for all the help we've gotten and the support we've had over the years.
Thank you. Okay. Show of hands, please, all in favor? Passes unanimously. Item four, approval of a memorandum of understanding between the Greater Aiken Chamber of Commerce and the City of Aiken in regards to the Young Entrepreneurs Academy.
This is a new program that the chamber has started. It's, it's, it's a national program, but it's new to this state and new to, to Aiken. They had their first session earlier this month, and they have asked that the City of Aiken would help with transportation. Transportation in general, when we look at our average cost going out of town with a lot of these events that we have, it costs about $75. Now, all these events, except for one where they may be going to Columbia next year, are gonna be local. And the fact that, in many cases, we won't have to pay overtime because the hours can be adjusted with our folks. They have, are willing to pay $50 per hour for the use of our bus and driver and do any collection of the necessary forms that we may need. So we feel it's fairly close, and this is one way that we could go ahead and participate in this program and to help out the youth in, in, in our community. So we are coming, before you deny, with a memorandum of understanding between the Greater Aiken Chamber of Commerce and the City of Aiken in regards to providing transportation for the Yay program.
Okay, thank you, sir. Do we have a motion and second for approval?
I submerge.
Second.
Okay, discussion?
I think you have someone who wants to speak to it?
Yeah, yes, sir.
Thank you very much. My name is Mike Fasowski. Thanks to councilman Dick DeWarr's email updates, I read what was coming up and it stopped my eye. Aiken City Council has been asked to partly fund transportation expenses for the Chamber of Commerce's Young Entrepreneurs Academy Yay educational program. Stated goals are to teach free-market enterprises, job creation, and business plan formulation. If the chamber wants to teach true free-market enterprise, the first lesson needs to be, don't come asking for a handout from the taxpayer. Design your business plan utilizing your God-given intelligence. Earn your business success with discipline and not government dole. The city is there for you if your business is on fire, needs water, or sewage, or is being robbed. Get your startup expenses from the bank. These young entrepreneurs in need of a bus ride are well aware of the internet startup company called Uber, U-B-E-R, a transportation company. The only thing standing in Uber's way of success is government licensing. Calling an Aiken-based transportation service Friday evening disclosed a realistic free-market asking price for this service of $200 per hour for the bus and driver. And they would gladly appreciate the Chamber of Commerce's commerce. Thank you.
Was there any consideration using private, private companies for the transportation needs?
A lot of this was discussed and quasi-read upon before I came here, between the city and the Chamber of Commerce. Most of these meetings were held in the spring, and so I really can't speak to that. I do know that the chamber has raised 20-some thousand dollars for the program to pay for some of the expenses, and that's why they're, they were willing to pay $50 per hour.
What, what is the budget for this? There's 24 students plus two chaperones in addition to eight trips, I think it said in our information packet. You know what the budget is, Gary, for this program? Don't know.
I, I know that they raised over 20-some thousand dollars for it, but I don't know what their budget is and what the money's being used for. Because again, I was not involved in those discussions. We do have some information that the chamber president gave concerning this on the who's participating, the various places they're going to, and who's invested funding so far towards this as far as the other sponsors are concerned.
Well, it's no doubt a great program, but I'm, I'd like to see more rationale, quite honestly, justifying why the city has to absorb the cost of something that could be provided by the business community. I don't know about Uber, that's a political issue. I don't wanna get anywhere near it, it's a licensing issue, and it's in the process of being resolved. But there, there surely must be other bus companies that could, that could deal with it as well. So I wonder if we could get more details on it. Did, did the chamber ask us, or did we just volunteer to do this? I'd, I'd just like to see more data.
Again, I believe the discussions, from what I understand, is, as a way of us participating in this program, we had volunteered to go ahead and provide the transportation. So when they came, be in late October, saying, here's the dates, we're ready for transportation. I asked the recreation department and others what information they had on this program. They had not participated in any of those discussions.
Nor had we.
This, this is an educational program. I, I think it's a terrific program, frankly.
It is.
It's an educational program for these kids. And the bus trips are the places where they're gonna go see and learn. They're gonna go to, to television stations, they're gonna go to, to some different businesses, some high-tech businesses, some regular restaurants and other types of businesses. You know, the bus trips are not for them to do their project, it's for them to go and learn. It's an educational opportunity, and it's something that this town needs to encourage entrepreneurs at every level, not just young ones, but it's something that I think we ought to be, we ought to get behind. If our cost is less than $75 an hour, and the chamber's gonna pay $50 an hour, we're talking about
$25.
Less than $25 an hour for this. Some of these trips are to Chick-fil-A in Aiken. I mean, that's 10 minutes out there and 10 minutes back and the wait in between. But, I mean, we're not talking about gobs and gobs of money for what is a terrific program. I think, you know, anything that can help these kids get a head start on being good independent entrepreneurs and capitalists, you know, I think it's a very small price to pay for this educational program.
Well, I, I think, though, we all agree that this is a great program. We all support the program, but I think Dr. Fasowski's thought is, there is a business out there that can do this, and let me make sure I understand this clearly. You're saying there is a business that can do this service. Is it gonna cost any more than what we're seeing here?
It'll probably cost them more than $25 an hour.
It's gonna cost more than $25 an hour? Okay.
Well, you know, if you go to the chamber, you know, they represent all the businesses in the city and the surrounding area. Is it a chamber program to start out with? It's not a city program?
It's chamber program.
What about the Board of Education? Are they gonna, you know? I noticed some of the days that the trips are scheduled also look to me like school days. Maybe I'm wrong. Maybe they're actually, there's no school on some of those days. But if they're gonna let people out on the.
It looks like everything's after-school time, after 4 o'clock.
Yeah, I think every item starts at four.
On Wednesdays that they are scheduled, those are the early release Wednesdays.
But, you know, I just don't see where we, you know, if the city wants to take up the program, I think we ought to have some say in what the program entails. But it seems like it's a chamber program, and why are we getting involved in it? I mean, we can provide a driver and so forth, but only if we get full compensation for what it costs. And it's really not that much, and the chamber does have money.
I think Roger, Roger has said that, that the former, a former city manager, and I've heard this also, had made, made a commitment to do this. Now, that alone is, doesn't mean that that's what we ought to do. However, I, I do feel like it's a good thing for the kids. I think it shows that we are working together, that the city cares about them as well. And we're working with the chamber, they work with us. And I just think, it's so many reasons why it's better. It's not just the money always. And I think maybe this is one case that we ought to approve it, or that I'm gonna approve it. Let me say that.
Well, we're one of the sponsors of that, and my company supports this. The, the comment made is that this is such a small, if I can use the term, small amount, given the benefits for our children, so. I think we have a motion and a second on the floor.
Yeah. We've got, we've got a motion and a second. And any, any other discussion?
I'll, I'll support it, only because the committee made it, but it's something the city manager should not have done.
Right.
And I hope future city managers don't do it. This council has a responsibility, and we ought to be involved where we're required to. I'm, I'm just not, I'm not pleased that we're once again picking up stuff that we shouldn't have picked up.
Okay, any other discussion? Show of hands, please, in favor? Okay, passes unanimously. Dick, did you, you voted for it? Okay. It passed unanimously. Five, approval of, approval to sell a house and property at 911 Murrah Avenue.
A few weeks ago, we discussed the fact that the city bought property going into what I refer to as the Publix Shopping Center. At the time, to acquire that property, there was a house on the property in addition. So it was, it actually was two lots, but combined into one property. You authorized the payment of $120,000 for that property and the home. At the time, I believe it was discussed with you that the home was gonna be taken down or removed, and the city would just have a vacant lot there, or as we discussed at our work session, what we would call a pocket park, or a small little park. After reevaluating this and looking at the plans, we discussed this with staff and decided that instead of spending the $10,000 to tear the home down, why don't we sell the home and provide a piece of property that could be used either residentially or even commercially within that area. What I'm asking tonight is that we settle on a price that you would like to see on that home, and that we put up a for-sale sign and try to go ahead and recoup some of the money that we spent on this property, plus not having to spend the money to tear down that home. So we are asking council to approve the sale of this home at 911 Murrah Avenue.
Is there a, well, I guess we'll make for motion and.
Okay. Do we have a motion and a second for approval?
Submerge? Or don't you?
Okay.
As part of the motion, do you want a?
Question?
A number?
Yes.
I think that could be a discussion. It'd be good if we could get a number from you all.
I think you always need a number.
What's the assess value?
We get an appraisal?
What's the appraised value?
Do we have an assess value?
Was there an appraisal done at the time when you bought the property?
Stuart can help us, but I think I'm right, Stuart. We did have an appraisal.
Yeah, I'm most assuredly, it was $120,000. Or if we paid any more than appraisal.
And we've taken part of that land, so the 120, I think we need to get another appraisal, let's.
Well, we're talking about just the house now, right?
Yes.
Not the property.
The house and property.
House that the property's sitting on, but part of that land is now gonna be this driveway to the public shopping.
Yeah, but is there, is there a value for the house?
I'm sure the house value has gone down appreciably. Since that time, I know the air conditioner has been removed from the outside. Several windows are broken, the door's been dust, busted open. I mean, if you said that the land that we're putting the road through is $30,000, that would leave it at 90. Again, maybe you'd get 90 for that property.
Why don't you put a sign on that says $90,000 or best offer?
Again, that's why we're bringing it to council.
Sounds good to me.
I like that.
Yeah, but there's trouble, a lot of times, we don't do, we don't put the OBO at the end of our offers, so.
We may not get even close to that, but that's a good start.
$10,000, then you can sat on it, but.
Well, I strongly recommend, we take a look at some of these appraisals we've been getting. We're talking about George's Pond, which really turned out to be a nightmare. You know, the city paid premium money for the corner of York and Richland, which I don't think was probably right. I think we ought to, you know, not be in such a great hurry to buy and sell properties without some, you know, kinda appraisals done with a cool head instead of in a hurry.
Well, this is an unusual issue, I think.
I know, all the other ones were too, Dick.
No, they weren't, no, they weren't. They were, George, I can tell you about George's Pond and the Ark and so forth. But in this particular case, we've purchased the house and the land, we've taken the amount of land that we need. It's gonna cost us $10,000 to tear the house down if we don't sell it. So 90K or best offer with 10,000 minimum is fine with me. It's, when you look at the city, I mean, the ideal thing would be to, to someone to buy the house and, and.
Move it, or back on the tax roll.
Yeah, generate tax revenue for the city. That may or may not be possible, we ought to give it to.
You might wanna put 60 days on it or something, I mean, you could do it as long as you wanted to, but.
But given the location, someone could come in and buy the place at a reasonable cost, set up a beauty shop or something at that location and.
Turn it into a business.
Right.
I don't know if you can do that in that neighborhood, but the next-door neighbor might wanna buy it.
Exactly.
Well, I mean, we've annexed it, it's up to us to zone it.
But I, I like your recommendation.
It's in the, is it in the city or the county?
It's now an annex, it's in the city.
In May of this year.
Have we notified the neighbors, by the way, that it was annexed? It's a non-issue, not a.
It would've had a sign on it, the annexation would've had a placard. So will you amend the motion to include the $90,000 or best offer on the sign?
I just wanna get rid of it, so whatever we need to change in my motion, I'll agree to.
And could we just say that we'd accept, accept offers till December 31st, 2014?
Yeah. OBO, and I think we need to advise the Realtor Association, so they have it in on their radar screen, too. I think it's Janice Nix or something, she's really been working with us on Crossson Park.
Maybe advise the neighbors of the offer?
Put a sign on it, or have the Realtor put a sign on it.
Did you second it, Dick? Do you agree?
I will second it, I don't know, somebody else seconded it, I think.
Who seconded it?
Was it you? Did you second it?
No, Gail seconded it.
I didn't. Gail seconded.
Gail did.
I made the motion, Gail seconded it.
Okay, very good.
So you agree? We'll vote on it, get rid of it.
Okay.
Can we reiterate what you're proposing?
What I'm hearing council say is that we'd put a for-sale sign on the property that $90,000 or best offer by 12/31/14.
Got it.
Okay. Show of hands, then, all in agreement? Passes unanimously. Item six, first reading of an ordinance to approve an inter-fund loan agreement and note for the installation of fencing at Citizens Park.
Yes, sir, I'm gonna read it by its title. An ordinance authorizing borrowing from the City of Aiken General Fund Special Holding Account as outlined in this ordinance for the purpose of funding the Citizens Park fencing project. The capital project sales tax had $500,000 in there to replace fencing at that location. We went out for bids on the portion that we felt needed to be completed, along with some other fencing that needed to be done under a separate funding account at Stewart Field. We received one bid on this, for this work. It's obviously under the $500,000 that we had within the CPST. And so what we'd like council to do, because this. we'd like council to do, because this work really needs to be done immediately if we're going to do it at all before we start having to use those fields next late winter, early spring. And this would allow us to borrow the funds necessary. Again, we may not need it. I'm hoping that we'd have enough funding by the time they finish this, but again, it's an opportunity for council to see how we're going to fund these projects and that we are moving forward on getting some of the CPST work completed. So for your consideration, this is first reading of an ordinance for the approval of an interfund loan agreement and note, and approval of the low bidder, Mayor Building Supply, for the installation of fencing at Citizen Park.
Thank you, sir. Do we have a motion and second approval?
So move. Second.
Second, okay. Any discussion? If not, show of hands, please, all in favor. Passes unanimously. Seven, approval of a recommendation from the Recreation Commission to revise the frequent user pass fee schedule for the HO Week's Tennis Center. Mr. Liddick, please.
We had our Recreation Commission look at the fees that we are currently charging at the tennis center. The fees had not changed since 2006. In my humble opinion, it's a great bargain that tennis players have in using this facility, given the amount of maintenance that we provide. As we heard earlier in our discussion at the work session, recreation does not pay for itself, as we well know. And so these fees are, could even be higher, but the Recreation Commission met, looked at the fees, and are making a recommendation to you tonight that we increase the fees as proposed and that those fee schedules would go into effect immediately.
Okay, sir. Thank you. Do we have a motion and a second for approval?
So move. Second.
Okay, discussion?
I just have the question with classifications. Senior adult is fifty-five. Senior family is fifty-five. I mean, it looks like it's going to be hard to, hard to put people in a category, I guess. Young professional family, I mean, what, how do you define a young professional family?
Nineteen to thirty, more than one person.
A young professional is nineteen to thirty, so a young professional family would be nineteen to thirty.
With more than one person or family.
If not, show of hands, please, all in favor. Passes unanimously. And petitions and requests, approval to unfreeze employee positions. Mr. Liddick, please.
Yes, we have two individuals that are going to be leaving the city shortly, and this, these two individuals are involved in the maintenance of our lift stations primarily, and so we would like to get out ahead of it and to ask council to approve the two vacancies for maintenance technicians within our water and sewer department.
Okay, sir. Do we have a motion and second for approval?
Move for the unfreezing of these two employee positions. Mayor? I second.
Second, okay. Discussion? Show of hands, please, all in favor. Passes unanimously. Okay. Information? Any issues?
I just want to thank both Public Services and Engineering Utilities for the work they're doing to improve the drainage issues, drainage problems, and pipes, aged pipes at homes like that. I really appreciate their effort, especially Tim Cokely's going beyond what is reasonably expected, but that's Tim Cokely. He always does that, so my thanks to both departments.
Mr. Mayor, on part of the information, item five on page 113, which was the Planning Commission prepares to consider historic in designation. I assume we'll get that information to all of the parties involved, the Historic Foundation. You know, there's a lot of fingers that go into the historic area. How is that going to, how do we be sure that over the next couple of months, as they consider this, the right people get invited?
The Planning Commission will be meeting on this tomorrow in a work session to discuss this new classification, but knowing that we wanted to get the word out, Tommy Paradise has already met with McDonnell Law, with Design Review Board, and has met with the Equine Committee concerning, again, because it's, a lot of these are in equine areas, to let them know what was going on, and so they both have a copy of that new classification.
And we would have, you know, I don't know if, when I'm thinking out loud, like if DDA would have an interest in this, or the Historic Aiken Foundation, you know, there's a lot of fingers that go on around town preserving different buildings and everything, and...
And again, these, what's the acreage, Tommy? Five acres and above?
Four.
Four acres. So it's, they're going to be large properties. There are probably none in downtown that would be involved, but it's kind of like, think of Rose Hill, size-wise, property, and some of the apartments that we have there. Once we set up that classification, that doesn't redesignate any properties whatsoever. Each property will have to come before the city and ask for that classification so that the neighbors and those within the area have the opportunity to go ahead and say, we agree, we disagree, or here's the thoughts and changes we'd like to see with this. But we've tried to reach out to different folks, and Councilmember Evner, that's a good point, will, once the Planning Commission has looked at it tomorrow night and assuming they feel comfortable with it, then we could disseminate this information to other groups.
Okay, I think, you know, there's a lot of little small groups around town that work on different properties and houses and so forth, and I was just curious that we, you know, get the word out and, you know, in the paper, even if we had to run a special meeting notice or something in there, so we get all of the different groups around town involved that would be, have an interest in it.
Why are we specifying four acres for it?
We just, that's just a number that we came up with. Again, there's no, in trying to look across the state and region, there's not a lot of information out on designating something as a historic in, and four acres seem like a nice size to be able to hold the events and meetings that they plan to be able to have at a historic in. Again, we can look at it. If it's working, council could, six months from now, a year from now, go ahead and change it to one acre or two acres, but we need it to start somewhere.
I don't know that, whether or not it can be an in and whether or not it's historic doesn't necessarily depend upon its acreage, and whether or not they have events doesn't necessarily, to me, determine whether or not it's a historic in or not. I just, I don't know that I'd tie acreage to it, but that's, Planning Commission can work on all that. That just needs to be part of their discussion.
It's a start.
It's a start.
That's right. It's a start. Okay, anything else?
Remember, nine o'clock on Thursday morning with Clemson.
Okay, we are adjourned.